Six P M. We're gonna resume our meeting. We've already been called in the service and because we have closed session prior to the regular meeting. And we will now have an invocation. At this time, I invite you all to join with us or engage in a moment of silent reflection. So if we could, let's pray. Lord, we come before you in humbleness to ask your blessings on this meeting. We ask that you give us discernment as well as guidance on the decisions we're about to make for our students, teachers, and complete staff in McDowell County School System. Let all our discussions and decisions be the best for our top priority, our children. Help us to be a positive influence and provide a safe environment for them all. We ask this in thy name. Amen. At this time, at this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. McGinnis to introduce our NJROTC color guard.
If y'all would please stand with me with the presentation of the colors.
Color guard. Attention, one, two, three. Colors. Ready, cut, go. Word. March. Colors. Walk. Right. Base. Freeze it. Colors.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, word, march.
Dr. Grid, at this time, item number six on the agenda is the superintendent remarks and alternative views.
Yes, sir, Mr. Frank. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the board, folks out there with us. We appreciate everybody joining us tonight. I've just got a few remarks here. We're off to a great start this year, and that wouldn't be possible without the help of McDowell County Schools team. Tonight, I want to recognize some folks who've worked hard, incredibly hard over the last little bit to prepare during our summer for our schools opening. We've been open just ten days as of today. Mr. Jeff Vaughn and the team at the maintenance department, Mr. Will Thomas and the transportation team, Mr. John Haynes and the child nutrition team, Mr. Garrett Berryhill and the technology team, Mr. Hughes and his team on implementing Infinite Campus, the new state information system. In addition, we've had numerous summer workers who went the extra mile to get our schools looking great. And finally, thank you to our administrators for burning that midnight oil to open their schools, especially at Glenwood, Ms. Rafe and her staff for host, they had hosted the YMCA camp, and folks, they were still working on Saturday and Sunday to prepare the school for Monday. And Pleasant Gardens and Mr. Wheeler, I see you back there, and his staff who had completed construction work just a few days before we were able to open our school. As a matter of fact, I think they completed the construction, and then y'all had to open house, and then we did some more cleaning, and then you did some more cleaning on the weekend, and finally, we're able to get the school open. So we're very grateful to all the extra work. It's just been a, it's been a lot going on this summer. We're proud of the work to get our schools up and going, and we're, and we're pleased with what we've seen, and it's been a great start. Many of our students have been back on campuses for over a month as the fall athletic season begin the week of August first. Our teams are off to a great start, and tonight, we have a special treat as our NJROTC team returns to present our colors as you, as you saw there. We miss them during the summer. During the summer, we, we kinda look around and go, whose turn is it? It's not near as much fun, Mr. Frank, as it is to see our kids up, being able to present those colors. This week, we've got meetings scheduled with our legislators to discuss the new school grant, and we have members from the governor's western office coming in for a visit. Tonight, we also have special recognitions from our students who've been busy earning awards from the College Board National Recognition Program. I'm always amazed by our student success, and we have only been in school for about ten days. So, I mean, they're already, already earning some awards. Very proud of you. Board, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to lead McDowell County Schools. It's an honor and a privilege each and every day. As part of leadership, is recognizing positives and finding ways to improve on any shortcomings, and one of the many reasons I believe in the model of growth for students and for staff. Although, we'd like to put Helene firmly behind us, last week released, North Carolina released our school performance data, and Helene was noticeable within western North Carolina data and McDowell County. We certainly had some incredibly bright spots in the data, as well as some areas that we see as opportunities for growth. That said, I believe we have the team position with what it takes to continue growing and moving our district in the right direction. Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask Ms. Widman, if you would, please come up, and let's do some
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening, audience. I'm really excited because I've got some amazing awards to give out this evening. I am gonna tell you a little bit about these students. I want you to know, as they were telling me about everything they were doing, I really was embarrassed because all I did in high school is go to high school and have a job. I mean, and that's all I did. And these kids do everything and then some. So I want you to hear a little bit about them. I hope you don't mind. So early on into this summer, I got an email. Ms. Holland had sent to me via College Board, and it was recognizing for the students from McDowell High School for some incredible accomplishments. So I'm gonna go ahead, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Kaler Carpenter. If you wanna come up, and you can kinda pose with Dr. Grid and get your award, but I want to tell you about this kiddo. He has worked full-time at a Christian camp, Teen Valley Ranch. He's also been part of the Chick-fil-A Leader Academy. He's been part of Science Olympiad, and he also placed in regionals. He was the environmental club president for two years. He's part of the National Honor Society and officer with the National Honor Society. He's also part of the Fellowship of Christian Titans. He loves math and science. He is currently employed at Ingalls in the bakery. So if you're going to the bakery at Ingalls, you might be getting one of his cakes. I don't know. He's an expert froster, I hear. And so he was awarded two awards, Rural Small Town Recognition and School Recognition Award from the College Boards. And so if you don't mind, like, give him a round of applause. He is a superstar. And the next, the next student I would like to recognize, Ms. Stephanie Alvarez Morales. And I got to see Stephanie today, an A P pre-cal. Stephanie has, she wants to be a surgeon. Stephanie wants to be a surgeon. Her goal is to attend Chapel Hill or N C State. She has done a summer, summer internship admission. She's been part of the Health Care's, Health Careers Academy. She's part of P G C, and she's also been part of Project Promise through Mahak. Stephanie, today, I was doing an observation of a teacher, and she is a sharp young lady. Caught her teacher's mistake, right? Because negative two cubed is negative, or is it positive? So the teacher put negative, right? Or, yeah. And so she was like, I'm not sure that's right. So Stephanie was awarded First Generation Award, Rural Small Town, Rural Small Town Recognition Award and School Recognition Award. So Stephanie, come on down. Please give her a round of applause. The next young man I would like to recognize is Mr. Robie Franklin. Robie has a smile that lights up, lights up the school. He has got a big smile, a smile for everybody. He's a very interesting young man. He's also interested in state, interested in possibly being an environmental engineer. His GPA is absolutely sky-high. He is a member of the basketball team. He loves music. He learned to play guitar thanks to YouTube. And he's also part of P G C, and I think he's taken every A P class that there's known to man, possibly, and then some. So Robie's award was Rural Small Town Recognition and School Recognition Award. So please give Robie a round of applause. And the last award is for Ms. Riley Warren. Riley is also interested in a career in the medical field, specifically as a pediatric nurse. Hmm. She's interested in App State. She's been part of the Chick-fil-A Academy, Science Olympiad. When she was in eighth grade, she went to States in Science Olympiad and write it, do it. She's part of F B L A Student Council. She plays softball. She's been part of Link. She also does travel ball, and she's just read seventy books lately, just, you know, in her spare time. I'm very jealous of these kids. And Riley's award, Rural Small Town and School Recognition. Riley, come
Ms. Smith, while he's making his way back, we have an request aggressive board. All right. This time, we're gonna recognize Ms. Long. We're always enthused and happy that you're here and making excellent presentations. So we'll turn it over to you, ma'am. Thank
So, good evening. My presentations are going to be recognizing McDowell County School employees. So this was something I was gonna tack on at the end, but I decided to make it my whole presentation because the people that I'm honoring deserve nothing less, as do the many others I won't have a chance to recognize. And my no tears, no contact goal, eye contact goal, is not happening this month. But first, I wanna fix a mistake I made. After I spoke last month, I was just relieved it was over and wanted to sit down and let the attention move on to someone else. Then Dr. Grid asked for a picture to be taken, and that threw me off even more. So the last time you saw this picture, it was hidden in a collage, but tonight, no one can miss it, especially Mr. Settles. Still nervous from speaking, I said we dressed up as Rick and Bobby instead of Ricky, Bobby, and Cal. Just to be clear, I was Cal. And hopefully, in the future, I can give answers that actually make sense. As Ricky Bobby says, if you're not first, you're last. So I'm keeping my focus on the people who are first where it really counts. Behind every success is someone who took the time to lift another with encouragement, guidance, and belief. And that's what these recognitions are about. Mr. Wheeler, that's what you're about. I know you're not someone who likes to be front and center, but honestly, it's the ones who avoid the spotlight that often deserve it the most. At first glance, this may look like just a regular keychain. Nothing fancy, nothing special, but it carries a story, a story I've asked Mr. Baker to share with you tonight.
One morning, a man was walking along a beach covered with thousands of starfish that had washed ashore during the night. Up ahead, someone was gently picking them up one by one and tossing each starfish back into the ocean. "Why are you spending so much energy on this?" the man asked. "There are too many of them to make a difference." "They'll die if they're left in the sun," the person replied without pausing. The man glanced up and down the endless shoreline. "But there are miles of beach and thousands of starfish. You can't possibly save them all. What difference could you make?" Another starfish was lifted from the sand and sent back into the waves. Smiling, the young man said. The person said, "I made a difference for that one."
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler, just like the truth found in, sorry, just like the truth found in the starfish story, you've made a difference to that one. In education, where men are fewer and far, uh, in education, I'm losing it because I'm trying really hard not to cry. Where men are fewer in number, your presence carries even a greater importance. For many of our boys, seeing a strong, steady male presence shows them the kind of man they can grow up to be, one who is respectful, dependable, and true to his word. And for our girls, your example has shown what genuine care, integrity, and character look like. You were the teacher who never let your students doubt their worth. All these years later, you still puddle up talking about those little kids that you taught, proof of just how deeply you love them and how much they've stayed with you. You're also a veteran who's already given so much in service to others, and the way you've carried that same spirit of service into your classroom and into your school makes your influence even the more powerful. The best way to honor you tonight is through the words of a former student whose life was changed because of you. Mr. Wheeler wasn't just my first-grade teacher. He was also my Sunday school teacher who taught me so much about life, from books of the Bible to Pink Floyd's Another Brick in the Wall. I have no idea what that is still. And every time I saw him, he acted like I was his best student. He was always in a good mood, encouraged us to speak our minds, even as little kids, making his classroom feel a place where we truly belonged. When I graduated high school, he told me he loved me and was extremely proud of me, words I'll never forget. He was always more than my teacher. He helped baptize me, and even now, when I sing in our church, I can't bring myself to look at him because he's always crying. And he comes to find me after the service to give me a big hug and tell me how much he loved it. Through his constant encouragement and unwavering belief in me, he helped shape me into someone better than I could have ever been on my own. Mr. Wheeler has been a steadfast person in each part of my life, from elementary school to graduate school. He has been there for me, and I love him now and always will. Keely M., first grade PG, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. You're the kinda leader that every parent hopes their child will look up to, and your influence has shaped the kids in our county in ways that will last. May your starfish serve as a reminder of the difference you made and continue to make one student at a time. Congratulations on your first year's principal. What makes it even more special is knowing your journey started at Pleasant Gardens as a teacher. To come back and now lead the way, this, now lead the very same school is such a full-circle moment and a beautiful reminder of how deeply rooted you are in this community. You're a rare salt and a reminder of how important it is for our students to see strong role models in education. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the heart you pour into our county, our schools, our staff, and our students. I am so glad that I'm one of the lucky ones to know you and to see firsthand the influence you have. I wanna end with two things. If you've ever been upset or complained to him, you know exactly what he does, and this little clip sums it up better than words.
Hey, Mr. Wheeler. So we wanted to show some of the best advice and, I guess, therapeutic exercise that you've ever taught us the years you were here at East. So, like Jennifer, I notice you're really sad.
It's been a long start to the beginning of the school year, yeah.
Okay. So I have an exercise.
Okay.
I want you to take your right hand to make it a fist.
Okay.
Take your left hand to make it a fist.
Okay.
And move it like this. Oh, wow, wow, wow.
Every single time you ever complain to him or are upset, he will do that. Okay? And the last thing, if you've ever gotten one over on him, like I have tonight, you already know what's coming. Dag on your hide. Thank you.
Okay, let me say this. Mr. Wheeler, if you and Ms. Long would come up here and get your picture made with Dr. Grid, I'd, I'd like to say something on behalf of Mr. Wheeler myself. Mr. Wheeler, I've been on the board fifteen years, and I've known you the whole time. And I echo what she says. And I'm gonna tell you this. I heard Steve Bush say this, and it's too bad Mr. Oliver isn't here, and Chad, he won't hold it against me, I guess. But you're an example of why the Marines need heroes too, being in Army, okay? But if you would come up with Ms. Long, with Dr. Grid, and get your picture made, and we are extremely proud of you. And I, I count you as a friend myself, sir. Thank you.
Okay, next up, sir, we have unfinished business. We have Ms. Suzanne Rampy, who will be coming up to give us an update on finance.
Nothing like a finance update after a emotional tribute there. I think we need to change the order. Let's make a check. All right. I have a quick finance update for you about what's going on in the finance department right now, and if you guys have any questions, just let me know. So, go ahead. Currently, we are still working on Hurricane Helene-related items. Obviously, we sent a insurance quest number three last week for about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that would, once we receive that, we should be, have received about three-point five million from insurance reimbursements for the expenses that we've had so far.
Ms. Rampy, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to say that over?
Yes, please.
Okay. For the Hurricane Helene-related expenses, we have billed the insurance last week, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of expenses. Once we receive that, we will have received three-point-five million dollars from insurance for reimbursements of expenses that we have expended to date. FEMA continues to work on other identified non-covered costs that are not covered by insurance. We did receive seventy-one thousand dollars from them last week, and to date, we've received about two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars in reimbursement of costs that we have. In general, FEMA reimburses after insurance or any costs that are denied through insurance. For two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, we just finished starting the year-end process. We should be in the final stages of that, and our audit work will begin. They were here last week for field work, and they will continue that through October thirty-first. And so that report should be to us by the end of the calendar year. For budget twenty-five, twenty-six, we are still pending a budget from the state, but we do have the continuation budget in place, so we are still able to make payroll, make, you know, pay our bills, things like that. The state does allow us a continuation budget. They also approved step increases, but no raises for staff. The finance committee will need to meet before the October meeting, and so we will have that scheduled so that in October, we can bring the budget resolution to you then for whatever we have identified at that point. And then we'll bring back a final budget once we get a budget from the state. And that's really what's going on right now, is closing last year and starting the new year. I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rampy.
Okay, up next, we've got Mr. Marsh, and he's gonna give us a facilities update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Grid, ladies and gentlemen. Again, it's always a pleasure to come forward with the board. I'll give a brief update on my directorate in transportation. Mr. Thomas and his staff have been continuing to work with bus inspections and repairs. As an update on our new activity bus, it's expected to arrive in early into the November of this year, so we're excited to get that bus. Technology is, the superintendent mentioned, Mr. Garrett Berryhill and his staff have been focusing much of their time and efforts on our new software changes and supporting the conversion to Infinite Campus, which has been a huge endeavor for a lot of folks. Also, as was mentioned, Mr. Haynes and his staff have been hard at it, and recently, they had an audit where I'm proud to present that Summer Mills program had zero findings for that program, so that's a big deal for our folks there. On the safety front, we have begun the process of installing our Knox boxes on our campus. And the board will remember, that's the first in the history that we've ever done here. So we purchased twenty-two of those and began to put those in all of our facilities. Keys to access to boxes were sent to each of our responsible fire departments by the manufacturer, and we are engraving some that we will deliver to our law enforcement partners very soon. Master keys for each school are being cut and be placed inside the box for emergency access. We are working with our law enforcement partners and our emergency management personnel to finalize our district's lockdown plan. The plan was written in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, and will be presented to principals next month. I spoke with Chief Mace of the McDowell County Sheriff's Office today, and they're very pleased with the product that we presented. We expect that to be pretty much across the board. Lockdown kits and binders have been distributed to each school in accordance with the numbers that were requested by each principal, and I'm happy to report lockdown drills have been occurring around our district. I have asked each principal to perform a drill at least once per quarter, and it's my intention to increase that and move towards once per month by year's end. In athletics, as was mentioned earlier, high school, middle school athletic programs are often full swing, and we're proud to see all of our folks out there enjoying themselves and representing our schools. Auxiliary services, Mr. Vaughn has continued to address the hundreds of work orders that exist in our sherpa desk system, and they continue to make great strides in areas of H V A C, facility upkeep, and we are beginning our implementation of preventive maintenance throughout our district. Our capital H V A C project, all of the funds that the board's approved, which again, as a reminder, is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, have been allocated to specific projects. So we've already got that money either spent or earmarked. As an update on your grants, Pleasant Gardens, the one-million-dollar grant that we got from the state, we're nearly complete, and all but about sixty thousand dollars of that has already been allocated or spent, and we're very pleased with that. And I think you can ask the principal tonight. He could talk about it. he could talk about it, but we really turned that around. I'm really happy with the product that we got there. As for West McDowell Middle School and McDowell High School, the $4 million grant that was allocated for those two areas is an initial planning phase, and it's in progress. The overall plan will be presented to our Building and Grounds and Administration once that preliminary phase is complete for approval and be brought to the Board. And tonight, finally, I'm happy to present that Cunningham Recreation and Game Time have approved a grant that I submitted last week and are willing to match a 100% match for two new playgrounds in our district. If approved, these projects will make the fifth and sixth new systems that we have installed since March of this year. Sir, that concludes my report, barring any questions.
Do you know where these playgrounds are gonna go yet?
Sir, it's my intention to work with the Chairman of the Board and Ground Committee and make recommendations, but we have not, sir. I can tell you that to date, Mr. Chairman, as again, as a reminder, North Cove, West Marion, Nebo Elementary, and Marion Elementary have all received new playgrounds since March, and those are from various, from various different entities, but, including insurance in one particular instance. But no, sir, we have not, it's not been finalized, that'll be for the pleasure of the Board, sir.
You're doing the playground installation in-house, or do you contract?
We contracted out, sir. It is my, it is my belief that a turnkey project does a number of things, and first of which is it provides us with a warranty. It removes a significant amount of liability from our folks because we don't have a lot of playground puter-togethers under our employment, and it's just easier, sir, to have those men and women working on other projects that are in the sherpa desk, and so we worked to do a full turnkey bid when we did the proposal.
Much appreciated.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, under new business, the first item there is request action on it, and it's a North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors nomination. And in the past, we have had representatives on the North Carolina School Board Directors, and Mr. English was a, was one of them, and Brian Piercy was one of them. And I have asked Mr. Baker if he would consider doing this, and it's, it's a, you know, it's time-consuming, he has to go to Raleigh four times a year, and it's a two-year commitment, but I can't think of anybody any, anymore deserving and, and able to do this and bring good things back to McDowell County schools. Of course, we're just nominating him tonight, and it has to be approved for this region, for him to represent the region. It's not just McDowell County, it's several other LEAs as well. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion to recommend Mr. Baker to be our nomination for the School Board Association.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Paul Baker as our NCBA representative.
Okay, we have a nomination by Mr. Shuford and a second by Mr. Abernathy, and I guess we'll get to discussion, but Mr. Baker, you told me you would accept this nomination. Are you still with that mindset?
Let me pray about it. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, look, in all sincerity, I think you'll make an excellent representative, and the things you can accomplish down there would be great for us, especially when you're making recommendations for changes with the state legislature, okay? All right, any further discussion? With no further discussion, I ask that all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is an eight vote. Okay, sir, I'll turn the board reports. Okay, all right. Curriculum and instruction, Mr. Settles, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one little thing now. I know that the new math initiative that we've rolled out is getting kicked off this week. Ms. Bells, Kim Bell's coming to meet with some of the teachers, so we're excited that that's getting cranked up, but other than that, we're just waiting for the school year to get started.
Have you heard any remarks? Ms. Bell's come?
Yeah, oh yeah. I think they're, they're excited about it.
Okay. Mr. Barxdale, you've been a busy man building the grounds. You got any reports?
We have been busy, and I just want to thank Mr. Marsh for his communication levels that he has been providing with buildings and grounds, and look forward to pushing forward with some of these projects. Thank you.
Mr. Shuford with finance?
I think Ms. Rampy has already given us a good update on finance there, but members of the Finance Committee be listening for an upcoming meeting that will be having before our October Board meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I appreciate you standing on top of it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hales, you've gone through round one, but I understand you're getting ready to go through round two. Have you got anything from the Policy Committee?
Yes, we have received the summer policy updates from the School Board Association and Campbell and Chatley, and we're meeting September 20th at 11:30 through the end of
Mr. Shuford, Head Start Report?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity today to sit in on the policymaking committee meeting for Head Start. Everything's going very well over there, as we would expect. Dr. Delaney and her staff do a wonderful job. I also had the unique opportunity to be here for a, they were having a, a professional development a couple of days here, and I got invited to lunch, and it was my favorite food, free. No, it was really good, yeah, they fed us a great meal. Gave me an opportunity to speak directly with a lot of those folks and, and also express my appreciation for the great impact they make on those young folks' lives.
Mr. Baker, Mr. McGinnis, you can code the NJROTC report if you'd like.
Okay, so, they just come off a very busy summer. As you know, with ROTC, they keep their calendar packed all year long. And you saw for the cadets, some of the most outstanding ones, Cadet Wyatt, she was the female leading the color guard, super example of just an A-class cadet leadership and all kinds of different ability. They're leading second place right now in the Area Eight for the ROTC in the local area. They're trying to build up some momentum to take first place, and if they can get that, they'll automatically qualify for the National Navy Drill Competition. So, that's what they're wanting to do right now, is concentrate on leading in Navy Drill and Ravel. They walked away third place overall, about 200-some-odd contenders, I believe it was, if I got that right, at the civilian marksmanship program recently. But yeah, they're ramping up for a good year. They're gonna be ramping up their efforts on fundraising, so if you see a car wash out there, go through. Kind of a sad note, my instructor that I had when I went through ROTC, Captain Hardy Rose, I learned today that he had passed. So, if I'm not bad mistaken, I believe he's entitled to internment at Arlington, so they'll probably be more forthcoming on that. But outside of that, they're gearing up for a big year.
Mr. Baker, you have it first, sir. All right, item number 13 on the agenda is approval of consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Greit.
Mr. Frank, it's a little unusual for you to turn that over to me, but I want to be real clear on something. First, I want to thank the Board for taking the time to do a, an outside-of-the-norm vote on one of those, and that was the approval of the electronic poll vote on August 27th for the McDowell High School CTE to attend the North Carolina Department of Transportation Summit in Raleigh. And folks, just so, for the record, so you understand what I'm talking about, we'd like to have those approved about 30 days in advance. Well, this group of students found out that they had an opportunity to go down to the transportation celebration there. They also, we didn't know it, they had about four days to turn it around, so I was able to pick up the phone with Ms. Smith and get, and get the Board all polled for a vote. We did put the, put the Board, the Board poll on there as well, but I wanted to let you know that that group actually ended up getting to meet Governor Stein, as well as the Transportation Secretary, and I felt like it was just a fantastic event. So, Board, I just want to say thank you for always putting our students first. You know, it's one of those that sometimes we get policy and procedure and things like that, and they can get in the way, and certainly, we do recognize that you're supposed to have 30 days waiting period before you do that, but sometimes we had, we've got to make sure we, we do the, the common sense things and take care of our kids. I would have really hated for them to miss that opportunity, and, and I'm very thankful and grateful that you all put them first and made that decision. Thank you.
Yes, sir. It's, it's funny you said that, and I'll get back to business at hand, but today, as he mentioned earlier, we had a meeting with one of our state representatives, and first thing he asked was, "How's our CTE department?" And Dr. Greit, without a hesitation, top-notch, you know, stellar, and it has been. It's a great time to be a student in McDowell County school system, whether, you know, whatever school it is. Our CTE programs and our opportunities for college credits, the sky's the limit. And golly, I guess I could have been a smart person if I'd been going to McDowell High School when I was that age, but it's, it's quite stellar, and we appreciate CTE Department tremendously. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda. However, I need to make everybody aware that any item may be pulled from the consent agenda with majority vote of the Board and discussed and voted on as a separate item if there is anybody that wants a separate item pulled. If we don't have anybody wanting a separate item pulled, I'll entertain that motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Settles and a second by Ms. Hales to approve the consent agenda as it's printed. Is there any further discussion concerning the consent agenda approval? Okay, with that being said, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous nine vote. Okay, we'll drop down to item number 15, and we'll, I'll entertain a motion on personnel considerations from closed session, that's both certified and non-certified.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel considerations, both certified and non-certified for.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Shuford and a second by Mr. Baker to, to approve the personnel considerations, both certified and non-certified, and at this time, is there any further discussion on the personnel considerations? Okay, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous nine vote. And item number 16 on the agenda is announcements. Our, our lead training for Board members is Friday, November 19th, 2025, Reese's Office, 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Board, yeah, September, and Board Work Session Monday, September 22nd, 4:30 PM, and the Board Regular Session Meeting Monday, October 13th, and we start at 4:30, and then the regular meetings at 6:00. And to be determined if there's a Board Work Session for October, and Board Regular Session Meeting November 10th, and then North Carolina School Boards Association Annual Conference, November 11th through 13th in Greensboro, and there are no Board Work Sessions in November or December. And Board Regular Session Annual Reorganization Meeting Monday, December 1st, 2025, at 6:00 PM. And with all that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Mr. Barxdale and a second by Mr. Allison to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous, at 9:42, I mean, excuse me, no, 6:42.